All right, good evening. This is the December 15th, 2021 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada.
Present.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Oh, oh, here.
Councilmember Olson.
Happy to be here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Great, there we go. Always this time of year.
Yeah, Steve would have been disappointed if I didn't.
That's true. That is true. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity that if anybody wants to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, is welcome to do so. And we did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and we did have one individual that did sign up. So we'll go ahead and start with Bonnie Madder, if you would like to go up and just state your aim and address for the record.
Beautiful, the lights are absolutely gorgeous. I don't know who did that, but they're just beautiful. Yeah, I do have one topic for open forum, and that is, I would appreciate it if the documents on the city website for meetings could be searchable, either that or if they could be broken up, because to get through 190 pages is almost impossible. So if that could be done, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that didn't sign up that wants to speak on open forum? Maybe just missed the sign in sheet? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close open forum. We'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, six is presentations. We have none this evening. Seven is consent calendar. Is there anything council would like to pull on consent?
No, I'm good.
Seeing none at this point, I will look then for a motion to approve consent.
Consent.
Motion by Councilmember Thede.
I second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you hear for anything that was on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Moving to number eight, which is approve dispersments. Eight A is to pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Dennis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings. We do have one public hearing this evening, and I believe Emily is going to start us through this, and this is the North Point Development. Welcome, Emily.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Everyone's looking lovely and festive this evening. It's very fun. Once a year, you just have to let loose, right?
Not quite everyone, but at least four fifths.
Yeah, four fifths, right. As indicated, several applications before you this evening related to the North Point Development. Most of you do know the site is located just south of 100th Street, is proposed on both the east and west side of Ideal Avenue. For reference, this is, oops, this is Renewal by Anderson. So in order for the developer to create the entire site, assemblage is necessary, so we have three separate applications that will create that assemblage, one a minor subdivision, and then two separate plats, applications that we'll dive into the details a little bit here. So the minor subdivision will create two 40-acre parcels. The western parcel, or 48 acres, will be retained by the current property owner for potential future development. The easterly 40 acres will be included in the North Point assemblage. One of the first preliminary plats will be the Cottage Grove Logistics Park plat, which includes six separate property owners, creating nine separate lots for future development and one outlot. The second preliminary plat will create two lots, which one will retain the existing home and outbuildings. The second lot will be again retained by that existing property owner for potential future development. One outlot, which is the existing Excel Energy Utility easement, and then of course the 105th Street right of way for the construction of that new road. The entirety of the proposed development is guided industrial, therefore the proposed zoning amendment to I-2 general industry is consistent with that land use plan along with that proposed PUD. So we'll look at the master site plan as a whole, and I want to make clear, the developer's looking again to just a broad idea of the proposed development, so the 252 acres potential for the 3.4 million square feet used for light distribution, manufacturing, warehouse and office space. A good similar reference is the Summers Landing Development, which was reviewed and approved kind of as a master site plan as well. And then each phase of that development came in as a specific or individual site plan review, so separate applications to kind of nail down those specifics of each phase of development. Some more specifics into the proposed development, the architecture, as you can see, are proposed as Class A TIP-UP panels, very similar to other projects and buildings constructed within the city's business park. I want to make mention of the proposed glass on the corners and the canopies over the door. We really want to make sure that we're breaking up those long walls of these potentially large buildings, so that we have a little bit of variety there. As with all developments that you do see before you, a tree inventory was required to be completed, indicating all trees on, or qualifying trees on the site, and all proposed qualifying trees to be removed. There is mitigation required as a part of the proposed master site plan. The developer is proposing to meet all of the city's minimum landscape standards, so planting all of those minimum plantings. In addition, they are proposing to plant that mitigation on site, so additional buffering on the site for, as well as meeting that required mitigation. As part of some of the comments and concerns that the developer has heard over the last several months at neighborhood meetings and public hearings, they provided these renderings to give a little bit of a visual of the screening, what that will look like with the birmingham and the landscaping on the site. I want to make very clear, this is of course some mature landscaping, but it gives a very good visual, long term, of what that visual from the right of way of these buildings will in fact look like. The developer did complete a noise study on the site, again, to address hopefully some concerns and questions related to the potential for noise from the potential users on the site. I'll pause for just a second. Are we good? Okay. This one. Again, completed a noise study on the site to ensure that any of the potential development or users on the site. There we go. Little technical difficulty, that's all right. We'll carry on. But as you can see, kind of in the center of the site, the red there, about 60 to 65 decibels. As you move towards those property lines, those decibels are lower, 50 to 55 decibels, which as you can see is something comparable to the sound of an air conditioner, again, meeting those minimum state requirements for noise and mitigation. The applicant is also proposing a sound wall on the south edge of the property, and most recently adjusted their plan to include that sound wall up the west side. And this is hopeful to mitigate any of that noise for existing residences neighboring this site, as well as potential future development in the area, to create a very good buffer. Again, with all industrial and commercial projects, a photometric plan is required to be completed as well. Any property lines adjacent to a residential district, we, city ordinance requires that less than half a foot candle of light spillage come across that property line, and any property lines adjacent to an industrial or additional commercial use is permitted one foot candle across that property line. From the photometric study, the proposed master site plan is meeting those minimum In a brief overview of the utilities, again, as the master site plan, they are proposing to mitigate stormwater on site within several stormwater basins. But again, I want to make very clear that as the developer comes with their proposed phases of developments, that is the time when we will dig into the details in ensuring that each of those phases is meeting that, those minimum stormwater requirements as a part of that proposed development. And finally, it's important to make mention of the proposed park dedication, which is around five acres. I know it looks a little bit funny as you look at it kind of in the middle of the city's business park, but this park will in fact support future potential residential development in the area as well, and also creates a pretty good buffer between that industrial use and potential residential use as well. So with that, after a good overview of the master site plan, I'm going to turn it over to City Engineer, Public Works Director Ryan Burfined, who's going to give some specifics on transportation.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So with traffic on this project, that was something we looked at heavily. It was looked at early on, and it was looked at really in, there's two parts. The city actually had a part even before this project, and then this project did additional studies. So with the city's A U R, we actually looked at a use like this, and it really looks at additional growth, right? What else is going to happen in the south area of the city? So it's something we had a pretty good handle going on into the project, and then with this project, the developer completed their own traffic study, just to confirm that they're within line of those studies the city had done previously, which we did find. And looking at all the traffic and what would be happening with this project and other projects, there was two parts to it. One is the local roads, I'll talk about first, and what improvements were showing for those roadways to meet not only this project's needs, but build out of this area as you see other potential industrial residential development in the south area of the city, and also looking a little more detailed at the roundabouts at 61, and then some future planning to the east. First, I'll talk about 105th Street. This is on the south side of the project. This is a new roadway that would be constructed to serve this project. It's a collector roadway that was in our city's comprehensive plan. We would have a roundabout on the west end, which would then transition into more of a residential collector going north, and on the east end, it would tie into Ideal Avenue. This will be a pretty typical three-lane section roadway with turn lanes. Looking at the intersection with 105th and Ideal, we'd be adding turn lanes to the Ideal Avenue portion of it, both south and north. The turn lanes are important with the truck traffic that, you know, is planned for this project to make sure they can get out of the through lanes of traffic when they need to make those turning movements. Next, looking at Ideal Avenue, going from north is on the right, I should say, this would be upgraded to a three-lane section roadway as well, with those right and left turn lanes. You can kind of see halfway between 105th and 100th, there's a proposed access point into the North Point Development, so we would have turn lanes for that as well. Looking at Ideal Avenue and Hunter Street, this would also be expanded. We do have some of these turn lanes here today for Renewal by Anderson, but with the three-lane section of Ideal, and then additional improvements on 100th, you'd have turn lanes all around, and you'd also have a pretty limited option, but there would be a route going north that we'll plan for into Renewal by Anderson as well. Looking at Hunter Street as a whole, you kind of have two parts. You have an existing urban section as you go east of Ideal Avenue, that'll remain urban. The curb and gutter is only about 15, 18 years old, so no need to make changes to that. Right now, it's kind of unusual with two lanes one way, one lane the other. We'll restripe that, do a mill and overlay to more of a traditional three-lane section, and keeping those turn lanes that go into Renewal by Anderson. One benefit is we will now have left turn lanes going into Renewal by Anderson. There's a lot of complaints today with some of the truck traffic that goes along Hunter Street, so this will help mitigate some of that with having an option for actual turn lanes for them to turn into their site and not have to be in a through lane of traffic. When you look west of Ideal Avenue, that's a rural section today, and we're proposing to maintain as that, because as it is a future county road, county roads typically remain rural in nature until they get to the full buildout. So we don't want to build curb and gutter today, knowing, you know, maybe someday the county has different visions if they have other visions to the south on Gray Cloud Island. We're very comfortable with the three-lane section, we've worked on that with the county, but just for the needs of this project, we're proposing it to remain rural at this time. And then looking over at the Hunter Street Jamaica Avenue intersection, that would be expanded with additional turn lanes, and then we would set it up for a future signal is what we're anticipating right now. We did look at a roundabout, and with the amount of truck traffic, you know, roundabouts are very necessary at Highway 61 with the six legs, you just can't do signals with that. Initially, we feel the trucks are a little better control, or a signal is a little better control for those trucks. That's something we'll continue to monitor, we'll watch the warrants, but we would be set up for a signal to be put in very easily at a future year. This would not happen next year with these other improvements. Looking at the Highway 621 roundabouts, this is something we looked at, I would say, the most thoroughly, because these are really built out to largely as big as we expect them to be, so we want to make sure those are going to continue to operate well. Right now, the main thing for these roundabouts is the peak times with shift change, and that's really when we see the most traffic coming in and out of these roundabouts. They operate, you know, very well today. What we look at is the peak hour and how much, what's the average wait time for vehicles? And from a technical standpoint, we look at level service A through F, A being they're working, you know, perfectly, very low traffic, up to D, which would be kind of the highest or lowest we want them rated, and then level of service E is at capacity, F is failed, so similar to grades at school. Right now, they are operating at level service A. You know, I'll acknowledge there are backups at times, right? It is looking at the peak hour and the average wait time, so certainly if you have a couple semis that can't go, you know, certainly people have said, why waited for 30 seconds, 45 seconds? That may be. What we're looking at is, on average, how much more time do we have to wait at these roundabouts at full buildout? And I'll add, it's not just this project, they also incorporated the developer, other traffic as well, what other growth will happen in this area over the time. And what they're looking at is their level of service A today, level of service C in the future. So if you think of it as like a glass of water, right? You know, they're pretty much empty today at the overall view, and we're going to be somewhere between half to three quarters full when this is fully built out and the other development we're looking at. So that's very consistent with what we planned for, for this area. We're pretty comfortable with that. And from a wait time, if you think about how long you wait today, it's maybe another 15 to 20 seconds cars would have to wait at that peak times. Outside of peak times, there's really no wait times on average for these roundabouts, so at this time, very comfortable, and that's really with the current situation. Another component we're looking at, really for future mitigation to have another outlet from this area, is the southwest arterial study. And this is the new county roadway that they're planning for to connect from Gray Cloud Island up to Highway 61 over at the Innovation Road interchange, and in blue, you can see Segment 1. That's a section that we started working on with the county. Initially, it was not in their five-year CAP plan, they've now moved it up. We're doing preliminary design next year with the county for that roadway, and that'll be a nice straight shot from Jamaica Avenue over to Innovation Road with a bridge over the railroad tracks. It's a very expensive project, it's on the order of $20 million, so it's something we're going to work with the county on from a funding perspective. There's a lot of options out there from economic development grants, federal funding, and other opportunities that we're going to be going after to help pay for this roadway. Like I said, all the studies that were done didn't consider this, just because we want to make sure the project can stand on its own with the current roadways, but this will be a really great outlet and another option in the future as we see additional development. You know, right now, if we could build this in the next five years, I think that's a big goal for us and the county at this time. So that's really a summary of the traffic. Like I said, we looked at it every which way and had multiple meetings and multiple reviews, and, you know, feeling comfortable with it at this time.
I guess I.
Councilmember Thede?
Can we do questions?
We, if you want to ask. Do you want to do it now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead.
So as I look at this, in terms of the traffic and up by Hunter Street and so forth, looks very logical in terms of having kind of the drive-ins, and then you got the, you're kind of a service road going back and forth and everything. I was just wondering what the thinking was on 105th. Yeah, you've got, actually, the inroads on both, on either side of Building 5, as opposed to maybe having one of them on Building 3 or something like that. What was, what was the logic associated with where those roads going in and out around 105th?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's something I probably have to turn with the developer. In terms of the actual access points, that's something that we took from their plan. I don't know if they want to answer it now, or could answer it at the end too as well if there's other questions for them. I will say that we're just designing it now, we're using their site plan, and we're going to kind of iron that out over the next couple of months before we bid the project out. So you could see these shift a little bit, because it's pretty easy to move them, but we would want them, you know, ironed out before the end, so.
And I could keep this till the, well, the other thing that kind of hit my logic meter is the parcel that is still down there on the corner of Ideal and 105th. Okay? And there's been interest in that property, I don't know what the current status is, but it would seem logical for that sound wall to go straight to, potentially to Ideal, you know, and have, have North Point and that property kind of work together to almost, you know, make it kind of look like it fits, as opposed to being a kind of a wart on the, and I don't want to say it's going to look terrible, but, but it's going to look, to me, I think it would look out of place with everything else. So I assume that with what we're looking at tonight, there will be flexibility in kind of looking at that and looking at whether it makes sense to incorporate kind of that into the scheme, because it was being looked at as potential multi-tenant, right? One, one company is looking at it, but potentially a multi-tenant, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Thede, one nice thing with the project, as Emily mentioned, each phase will be coming back for its own site plan review, and that corner is a little bit further down the line, so that's definitely something we can keep in mind, and as things materialize in that area, you know, make sure we incorporate that with that phase at that time, so.
Because the other thing would be water runoff, because you got that little corner down there, and you got the, got the roads and the, you know, you don't want that corner to, to fill up with water. I think North Point has enough issues with, with water in different places from some of the things I've read, but, but, so, yeah, okay.
All right, with that, I will turn it over to Christine to talk about tip.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before I go into my slides, a couple of things I wanted to note. So North Point is making an investment of $310 million. The preliminary road and utility estimates are $9.93 million. The preliminary road and utility estimates are 9.93 million. And then the city development fees are approximately $7 million. Additionally, as part of this process, and then as we have had developments come forward, one of the things that we noted is our TIF boundary had not been adjusted since 1986. So we took that back to the Planning Commission in September to ensure that TIF boundary included the entire city. Before, it was very limited, so we expanded that to the entire city, which is very common practice for communities to do. That allows the EDA in the future, if there's any kind of programs that they want to have, they have that ability now to do that. So now, moving forward here with the, what's before us with North Point, as you can see on the screen, the maximum amount of tax increment collected cannot exceed the project cost. That's shown in the table at over 18.6 million. The budget does not resemble the amount of assistance being provided. The actual amount of assistance will be 8.311 million in the form of a pay as you go note. So the EDA approved the term sheet for North Point at their November meeting, and then just on Tuesday, the EDA approved the actual TIF agreement. And my slides kind of go through kind of each section of the TIF agreement. So under the general section, the developer will construct all the public improvements by April 30th, 2024. As you can see, the development will be done in phases. There's commencement date and completion dates. There's also job and wage goals. The developer must create at least 1,870 full-time jobs within two years of completion. 300 of those jobs must exceed an hourly wage totaling 200 of the state's minimum wage at the time of the certificate of occupancy. The wage in 2020 is $20.66 starting. In terms of the actual TIF note, as I stated, they'll receive that pay as you go note and the amount of that 8.311 million after providing proof of actual expenditures and in connection with public improvements. The term of the TIF note will be six years, so it's shorter than what's allowed by state statute. The interest will be paid at 4% payable from 90% of the available tax increment. The EDA will be retaining 10%. And as always, in the event of default, the city can cancel or rescind that TIF note as well. And the developer also will not be seeking a reduction in the market value of the property during the term of the TIF note as well. The EDA also looked at the business subsidy, and the developer has acknowledged that it's in accordance with state statutes. Additionally, another aspect of TIF that we usually do for our TIF projects is providing an interfund loan. So with the creation of the TIF district, it will authorize the EDA to use tax increment to pay for certain qualified costs in the TIF plan. So those qualified costs include site improvements, preparation, public utilities, and other qualifying improvements, interest and administrative costs. That interfund loan is up to $750,000 from the city's Future Economic Development Fund. It's transferred to the city's TIF fund, excuse me, the EDA's TIF fund, to pay for a portion of those qualified costs. As the EDA receives the tax increment revenue from that TIF district or other revenue, the EDA TIF fund will repay the interfund loan to the city's Future Economic Development Fund. So with that, before you are a list of all the actions. One thing I will note as part of efficiency for tonight's meeting, we are required to hold a public hearing for all the TIF-related items. So that's Items Three, Four, and Five. But just for efficiency, you can tonight open a public hearing and then hear all items. So staff is here for any questions. The developer's here as well, if you'd like to hear from them.
All right. Why don't we, why don't we do that? If, if council's fine, why don't we just let the, have the developer come up and then if there's any questions for staff or the developer, we can cover that at that time? Would you like to come up? Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Brent Miles, one of the owners and founders of North Point based in Kansas City. With me tonight, we have Keith and Christina on our team. Obviously, as you know, they do all the hard work. But all joking aside, tonight's an exciting night for us. We're ready to invest over $300 million here in your community and create a lot of, a lot of jobs and a lot of good paying jobs. We'll keep it short and sweet for, for weather's sake, and then I'll address kind of specifically your questions if that's okay. As many of you know, we're based in Kansas City, largest privately held landlord in the U.S. In-house design services, architecture. We'll talk a little bit about your, your access question here, probably on this slide. I actually think you might bring up a good point. I think we'll deal with this in the specifics. What we looked at was really for Building Three in particular, the spacing to that roundabout that's at 105th. So we want to be, you know, cautious of that. So we don't like to show anything in there that we're not confident that we could actually get from a spacing standpoint. I think what you may ultimately see is a drive that's somewhere between Three and Five that probably splits both is, is my guess, is what practically happens when we get into the design of that. The parcel that is, the sound wall goes around. If we had our choice, we will incorporate that in. I'll just say publicly, we are trying to acquire that piece of property. So you have my word that if, if we can't, if we're not successful, we'll work with them as partners of where that sound wall should be instead of jagging, you know, we maybe go along 105th. But if we have our way and hopefully everything works out, it will automatically be on that south end because we'll incorporate that into the project. So that's our goal, is to pick that up as part of this for a variety of reasons. As you heard, obviously, tonight, you have lots of things in front of you. We've been through EDA. We've been through Planning Commission, though not required. We did hold two community meetings. We love to get feedback. We don't like a packed house on the night of the vote. We try to, you know, hit as many issues as we can before we do that. I think we've done a good job of being transparent, trying to incorporate sound wall, barrier, setbacks, design, architecture, and then, as you heard from Ryan, primarily traffic. And so, as I say, if you think you're concerned about traffic, we're more concerned about traffic. We've got to get, we've got to get those 1,870 employees in, and we've got to get, you know, trucks and traffic and, and goods and services into this park. So we will, as you can see in the audience, we have a couple of the land sellers, so they're anxiously awaiting approvals tonight. And if all goes well tonight, we'll start those land closings on Monday, and they'll go through the next essentially week and a half, two weeks. And then we'll wait for that beautiful spring Minnesota weather so that we can actually thaw out and, and start construction here. We've provided just some interior shots. These are buildings that we own and operate today. These are tenants. I specifically always show this tenant. This is the first lease North Point ever signed, Velocity. So it's a really cool space, but I love it because it's our very first tenant ever. We have about 460 leases today. Lots of wages, like I think we lose scale sometimes of how big this project is when we see it on these little screens or the 11 by 17s. But as you heard with the job counts, the capital investment, no matter where we go in the country, $300 million is a lot of money. That's a lot of money that we want to invest here. I'll just note that that doesn't include what the tenants put inside the building. You know, that's our $300 million. And I always bring up the example I did at chewy.com in northeast Pennsylvania. I think our building was $50 million and they put 90 inside it. And so I always describe it as we're just a thick candy shell. So I think what you'll see here is a over capital investment of 400, if I was to guess, 400, $500 million when it's all said and done. And that is significant in this market, but it's significant anywhere. We're excited for the job creation, but most importantly, we're excited to be good community partners. We're excited to invest our capital here. We're excited to create the jobs. And as you know, we're long-term holders, so this is something that we'll be proud of as a, as a group for the next 30-plus years. So with that, I think I answered the two specific questions. More than happy to answer any other. And if it's a too hard a question, I'll have Christine come up and answer it for me.
Tip it over. Council, any questions for? I know we've had some great workshop sessions and, and some of us EDA planning whatever, so I mean, I think we've kind of followed along. So we appreciate all the efforts that you've been putting forth to answer a lot of the questions for whether it's us, our staff, or our citizens, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Fantastic. All right. Council, any questions for staff at this point? All right. So to be official, we do need to open the public hearing. If there is anybody that wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
I would like to speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
How did it come out, huh? Yeah, I just had a few questions. Thank you very much.
And I know you said it before, but I'll need you to...
Yeah, sure. Bonnie Matter, 6649 in Skip Avenue South. Thank you very much. One of the questions that I had has to do with the Southwest Washington County arterial study. And in that, it said, "A major component of the project will be the construction of a new roadway that will connect directly from Jamaica Avenue to the Innovation Road Interchange." I understand that's Jamaica Avenue to 100, 100 over. So you're going to take that directly across, got that? Which is shown as Segment One in the figure below. This would also include a bridge over the Canadian Pacific Railroad. Okay, so there's that piece. But then, so will Washington County be paying for that because that's 100?
Well, it would actually, I guess I can answer, part of it is yes. Part of it would be Washington County. Part of it might be other opportunities out there, whether, I think it was mentioned in the conversations by our staff, it could be federal, state economic development money.
And then there was also a bridge?
Yes.
Okay. And again, is that similar situation?
Same thing.
Because Washington County has indicated that they're not interested in being part of that. Is that correct? That's what I read in...
Not correct? I don't believe so. And in fact, I just talked to our county commissioner the other day.
It says the TIF development is directly adjacent to the preferred concept for the future county road. Based on the provided site plan, this development will generate a significant amount of new traffic, including increased truck traffic. This increase, is this not, is this something, is it different?
Yeah, I guess, I, I, I'm not entirely sure, you know, what, what specifically you're talking about. I mean, obviously, part of the TIF and the development itself is going to take care of some of the road projects that were shown on the map. And maybe that's what that's referring to?
It says, "However, currently, many of the roads are not county-owned. Improvements to infrastructure related to the Southwest arterial are currently not programmed in the county improvement plan, CIP. Because the adjacent roadways are not currently county-owned infrastructure, the county will not request increment." I just want to know, are the residents of Cottage Grove going to be responsible for this?
The answer is no.
Thank you.
Yes, the answer is no. I, I, now that you read the rest of it, I understand what you're talking about.
Thank you.
What, what the county was doing, just so you know, is everybody can, can state if they're, if they're okay with tax increment financing being utilized to, to build the infrastructure. And the county board approved that. They said, yes, we, we understand.
Yes, they agreed with it, but they're just saying, we're not, we're not in on it with you.
That is correct.
Correct. So we have to find...
So when you're talking about what that is, though, the, the road that's directly around this property and like the 105th, 100 Street...
I got the... Okay.
No, what I'm saying, though, is the money that we're doing from our tax increment financing will be covering the cost of that. What I think you're talking about when you asked about that extension of, from Jamaica down to 61 and that bridge, that's a separate thing. That is, would be a county road, and that would be county participation along with any federal or state or economic development money that would be involved in that. Because that does not, it's affecting this project, if you will, and, and benefit for the city as well as economic development. But the point is, is it's not part of the initial project here.
So, and my understanding is the expectation is that this traffic, which I still haven't under, I don't understand how much traffic we're talking about from semis, trailer tractor, you know, whatever. What, what are we talking about, cars? But it's my understanding that the traffic will go to one, you know, take 100 down to Innovation Road and then go backwards on 61. That's what we think is going to happen once this 100 is in place?
Well, except that if you look at it the way it sits today, it would look weird that way. But if you actually look at the map that was provided during the, the meeting today, it's actually going to be a straight shot across. There isn't going to be a jogging over and down.
Yes, because you're going to put in the railroad bridge.
Yes, yes. And a new connection.
At a considerable cost.
What's that?
At a considerable cost.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, how will we pay for that?
Well, as I mentioned to you, that is being discussed right now with the county. That would be county funding as well as federal, state, and economic development.
All right. Thank you.
Pete from Jamaica has access to 61 because I don't know if she knows that.
No, I think, what, what he's saying is if you, if you're aware that there'll be access, are you talking about Jamaica as it sits today?
Yeah, 100 to, on, on, on Jamaica to 61. I mean, that's gonna, that's probably going to be the initial path.
For now, yes.
That's the traffic will take.
How many vehicles are we talking?
Well, it was on the, on the list. I don't, I can't say it off the top. Ryan, I don't know if you wanted to share, if you can remember what... Okay. We could, we could, we'll help you with that. We could give it to you. But I guess the only point I'll mention to you, though, is as Ryan was just sharing, based on our full buildout numbers that we have from the data, the fact of the matter is, and I think if I'm, I'll try to say it correctly, Ryan said currently today we're at an A rating, which is really good.
Yes, I heard that.
And then the second would be, at, at full buildout would be C.
I heard that, yeah. I did, I got that. And I did understand the A through F rating. The other question I guess I have is on Hadley. Will Hadley be closed off at 100?
I wouldn't say, it's not going to be closed off, no. It, they'll be, but it's going to be redirected. There's a new way that that road is going to loop.
Because if I was a semi driver, I would go out to Hadley and take it down to Gray Cloud Trail South and go over the 70th Street Bridge.
Seven, oh, well, I don't, first of all, I'm not so sure that they can get, that, that would actually be really a long way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a height issue on that bridge.
Bridge.
I don't know that a semi can make under there.
Oh, it has to go underneath that.
It would have to go under that bridge, there's no access.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Take care. Appreciate it.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public hearing? All right. I will then go ahead and close the public hearing. And council, as you can see on our screen, there's...
Mayor, I will move that we adopt Resolution 2021-166, approving the master site plan for the proposed construction of approximately 3.4 million square feet of warehouse, manufacturing, distribution, and office building space, a minor subdivision creating two approximate 40-acre parcels, the Cottage Grove Logistics Park preliminary plot creating nine parcels and one outlot, and the Julene preliminary plot creating two parcels, one outlot, and right-of-way of future 105th Street.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Who would like to do two?
I will move to adopt ordinance number 1050, approving the zoning amendment to rezone 252 acres of land within the proposed assemblage from Ag 1, agricultural preservation, to Ag 2, agricultural, to I 2, general industry with a PUD planned unit development.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have...
Second.
Actually, I, all right, I'll take...
I'll second.
All right. I was going to say, I saw you raise your hand, but you didn't say anything. So I'll, second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number three?
I'll make motion for us to adopt Resolution 2021-168, approving a modification to the I'll make motion for us to adopt Resolution 2021-168, approving a modification to the development program for development district number one and a tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing district number 1-20, establishing tax increment financing district number 1-20. Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none on this one, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Number four?
I'll motion to authorize the contract of private development by and between the Cottage Grove Economic Development Authority and NP BGO Cottage Grove Logistics Park LLC.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Cambada.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Again, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And the final?
Why don't you take this one, Mayor?
I'll do, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2021-167, authorizing the interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with the tax increment financing district numbered 1-20, NP BGO Cottage Grove Logistics Park LLC.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Welcome to Cottage Grove.
Thank you.
You know my joke, I said, Christina, congratulations, you're on the starting.
Yeah, there you go. Now the fun starts, right? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep. And safe travels.
Safe and happy holidays.
Yep, you too. So counsel, almost done. 10 is bid awards or none this evening. 11 is regular agenda, there is nothing this evening. 12, council comments or requests? Mr. Cambada?
I would just like to put it on the record that in my tenure on the Planning Commission, I saw a lot of applications come through, and I would say this was one of the most comprehensive and well-thought-out on the first shot. I feel like very little had to change because they drew from their clearly vast experience and just brought a good proposal to the table right from the start.
Sounds good. Awesome. Councilmember Dennis?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Couple things. First off, I had an opportunity to participate with our Cottage Grove Lions on Saturday of last week. And I know Councilmember Olson will probably talk a little bit more about this, but the Lions were generous to come together and do some shopping, provide some funds for assistance to the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Group, which is something very much appreciated and needed. And I wanted to just comment because everyone, of course, brings a value into that process. But Councilmember Olson really put a lot of time and energy into organizing the entire shopping event. He reached out to a number of different organizations here to find maybe some additional needs that we could help with, and just did an amazing job with that. So kudos to him for his energy and commitment. And then the last thing I just wanted to do is mention that, you know, every year I usually had done a, an update here for the community, and we decided to do a little bit different this year. But just to say that we've had, even in the time of continuing COVID and other challenges, we've had a great year as a team, our council, our staff, all the volunteers who work on commissions, people that make a great difference in the community. Cottage Grove is an amazing place to be. And as Councilmember Cambada pointed out about this company here coming in to invest 310 million, people want to be here, and people want to move here. People love Cottage Grove. So it's an amazing place. We need to keep that in mind, keep doing the great things that we are. And last but not least, happy holidays to everybody for a safe and wonderful time. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Thede?
All right. With it being so warm and everything outside, I'm sure everybody's thinking about Strawberry Fest. So, you know, right now, we're probably going to have, we had one meeting the other night, kind of initial meeting. We're going to get together in probably the second week of January. We really need some, some new people, some new ideas, some energetic people, not that we don't have some right now, but, but on the committee to really make this a fantastic 2022 Strawberry Fest. So reach out to me, my emails on the website, whatever, and we'll get you on the mailing list so that, email list so that you can attend the meetings. So it's going to be a fantastic time. And I'd also like to say, hope everybody's, you know, those people that celebrate the holidays in December or even a little earlier and already started, happy holidays, and then with, you know, for the next couple of weeks and whatever, and even gosh, into the first and next year, there's people that celebrate kind of that annual holiday. But happy holidays, whatever your holiday might be. So there you go.
There you go. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Dennis, for bringing up our shopping and wrapping activity. That was very kind of you, and it was also kind of you to be there for the entire event. We had a really fun time with our Lions Club and our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team coming together to spend over $7,000 to help families in need for the holiday season. Military families, veterans, you know, folks from all over the community who just needed a lift. And I'm grateful to all the various organizations that participated, including Suawashco Cares, Norris Square Presbyterian Homes also participated, and several others. One thing that I do want to add is one of our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon members who helped with getting me some of the information that we needed in order to take care of these families this holiday season is a wonderful lady named Deb Mason, and we lost Deb a couple of days ago. Deb, Deb worked very hard on behalf of basic needs. Some of you might remember Stone Soup Thrift Shop as a volunteer. She's very dedicated to serving seniors, making certain that this event that we just took care of wasn't just focused on kids, but it was focused on the adults and the seniors and the folks who needed a lift. And she was a passionate advocate for taking care of those who just needed a little help periodically at any point in time during the course of the year. So, you know, my condolences to Deb's family, all of whom are local community members. And, you know, let's all remember that, you know, even, even during this holiday season of joy, there are going to be circumstances where some people are faced with tragedies like this. And it's our job as friends and neighbors to lift those people up in any way that we can. So don't be afraid to reach out to somebody that you know who might need a lift. Sometimes it's just a kind word, a phone call, a cup of coffee. It doesn't have to be a major gesture, but just the fact that you're thinking of them is often enough to lift their spirits, and really, that's what we're all here for.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. Just two things real quick. One is, you know, obviously, depending on when you're watching, if you're watching it live right now, we're obviously at our council meeting on this Wednesday, which is unprecedented when you look outside for the weather, kind of leading a little bit off of what Councilmember Olson was saying. So tonight, we've got possibly severe weather and tornadoes, and tomorrow it'll probably be sheets of ice. I know our Public Works crew has done a tremendous job, by the way, and that was part of my segue into that, this last Friday into Saturday, that was, you know, 20-plus inches, almost two feet of snow. And then you look at out there today, and there's like almost nothing, which just tells you how much warmth we had today. Then you're talking about tornadoes in Minnesota and such, and then tomorrow it's going to be back to ice again. So our Public Works crew, please pass our appreciation along to them. They did a tremendous job managing through that. And then kind of on the local thing, as we're heading to the end of the year here, the only other thing I want to remind everybody about, we typically would have had the holiday train stopping in Cottage Grove, but again, due to COVID this year, that did not happen. But this coming Saturday, the 18th, at 7 o'clock, there will be a virtual holiday train with music on that. That's online. The information is out there. I'm sure we'll make sure it's linked on our city's site, too. So if you're interested in seeing, listening to some great music, and remember, the purpose of this is to provide financial assistance to the Friends in Need Food Shelf here that covers Cottage Grove Simple Park in Newport and the area. And their goal was to raise 90,000. I've not heard the number, but I also know that CP Rail does provide a check for that event, too, and they're still doing that even though they're not going to be here. So we thank Canadian Pacific for their generous donations once again to our community and supporting those that are in need during this holiday season. So with that, I, the final part is workshop open to the public, there is none. 14 is workshop closed to the public, there is none. I will look for a motion.
Motion. Who adjourned?
Motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Happy holidays, everybody.